Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for January 8, 2025. Look around, I see that everyone is here, so we do have a quorum. We're gonna stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance both to the nation and to the state of Texas, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation's gonna be delivered by Councilman Robinson?
Would you all bow your heads, please? Our heavenly Father, we humbly offer ourselves before you tonight, and we thank you for your loving grace and forgiveness. May your wisdom and power come upon this city council to whom you have entrusted leadership. May the responsibility of our service to the citizens of this great city be heavily on our hearts. Father, we ask that you protect this body of public servants. We ask that you surround this council and your city staff and your police officers and our firefighters, our emergency personnel, our residents, our visitors with your holy angels. Furthermore, Lord, please protect our nation's military personnel and bless the United States of America. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, our Lord, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. First, we have Jessica Withrow.
She'll speak at the inter- at the item.
Yeah, I can speak as the visitor of the Shenandoah Sharks contract.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay, or would you all just keep it right now?
Yeah, it'll be okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mike McLeod?
Mayor, a point of order before we start. For the city attorney, if a citizen is coming to speak to us about an item specifically on the agenda, are we, as council members, allowed to ask questions?
In that, during that agenda item, yes.
During that agenda.
He said, he said what?
He says he can't hear you.
Can't hear.
The question is, can a council member ask a question of a person coming before us on a specific agenda item when they speak?
If they speak during that agenda item, yes.
So, we're not there at that agenda item yet. I'm happy to wait.
Well, it's up to you unless you're gonna have-
I can say something general, and then you can ask questions during the agenda if you'd like for some history.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm Mike McLeod. I live at 135 Bella Luna in Shenandoah. Tonight, the city council will be considering a new lease for the agreement for the Shenandoah Sharks, and this proposal includes a significant rent increase of about 50%. Currently, I don't hold any official position with the Sharks nor with the city, but I'm a long-term resident, a former council member, a former president of the Sharks, and a parent of two Shark swimmers. And I want to speak tonight and express my strong support for the continued success of our children's swim team. So, tonight, I'm gonna be asking city council to refrain from implementing the proposed increase, collaborate with the Sharks to develop a mutually beneficial and long-term agreement, and form a strong partnership with the swim team to ensure a continued presence of a competitive swim program within our community for years to come. And if I need to say more during an agenda item, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Josh Parks.
Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. Name is Josh Parks, living Rosewood in the valley. I'm gonna do this a little different. I think I've been approaching this wrong. I'm gonna eat my words a little bit tonight. John Fran's been parked out front of my house quite a bit lately, so I'm gonna try this different. I don't know what I'm doing, but I'm doing my best. I want to be clear about my last Facebook post for those that may have been offended. When I say hold them accountable, I talk about the city as a whole, not our police department, not our offices, officers. I'm not trying to put the blame on one person. We are united as one. I'm not saying the police don't do their job. What I'm trying to express is that we have a problem in our city with people running the stop sign, a problem that needs a better solution than is currently being offered to the problem. I commend, I respect, and I appreciate everything that Shenandoah Police Department does for us, and I have made that very clear over every time that I've spoke over up here. Now, please try to understand why I'm so passionate about this, this subject. I have two small children, six and seven years old. Eighty percent of the time when we're outside with me and my wife and our neighbors and our kids with their kids and where they're playing and stuff, people are speeding and running through that stop sign. As a parent, my worst fear is my child being mowed down by a vehicle, and I think as every parent, people understand that concern. I may come off too blunt, unclear, or even an a-hole, but I'm not a politician or a public speaker. I'm a father concerned about a problem in our great city that affects not just my family but all families in Shenandoah. I always try and present possible solutions or ideas for solutions when I come to these meetings. Tonight, I will once again present these solutions. Strategically place speed bumps. I'm not talking about littering the city with them, talking about like in front of the toddler park, you know, Holly Hill. Let's give these people a chance to check their mail without getting mowed down, you know? And at the entrance, not in the middle where it's blocking the houses, but like right where it comes in, same thing, you know, just strategic, maybe five speed bumps in the whole city, nothing crazy, not littering our streets, because no one wants to go boom, 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 boom. We don't want to slow down fire trucks. We don't want to slow down the ambulances. Dummy cars, if we have cars with good motors and transmissions, which is on the agenda tonight, and I say buy the police whatever they need. Gated entrances, more signage, strictly enforced, protected by Shenandoah PD. When we have big busts, let's put them on the news, let them know that Shenandoah stands strong and our police department stands on business. Residents have concerns about loose dogs, speeding, maintenance. Can I finish?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Residents have concerns about loose dogs, speeding, maintenance issues at the park, whether it's minor or big, ordinances, et cetera. I request that we have a town hall meeting. This will give the residents the opportunity to express their current concerns in a less intimidating manner, like standing at the podium in front of you guys, which everyone at the city is very approachable residents. You can talk to them. They're very kind, and they will listen. But this will give the residents a comfortable opportunity to present their concerns while also giving the city the opportunity to express those concerns on one-on-one situations, why there is a dog problem, why there's a process for the dogs to be taken, or the residents to be fined, or whatever that is, the processes with the ordinance, everything like that. I think a lot of people don't understand, and that's where a lot of their frustration comes from. I don't understand why they don't come to these meetings and talk to y'all. You know, y'all all seem very nice, very nonjudgmental and open to hear. So, thank you, and I hope y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Anyone else? No? All right, we're gonna move on to item number six, introduction of new employee.
Mayor and council, I am happy to introduce Geronimo to you. He's there in the back. We just hired Geronimo. Some of you may recognize Geronimo, so he actually used to work here for a company that we use for our cleaning services. He and his wife would clean the building, and the staff, we were very impressed with him. They always did a fine job. Then, when the opportunity came where he applied for a field service rep position, it was an easy, easy interview. Geronimo comes from Tempranillo, Mexico. He's got three boys, loves playing soccer with them, loves playing games with them. We're happy to have him on board. Thank you, Geronimo.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bienvenido. That's welcome in Spanish. All right, gonna move on to item number seven, proclamation designated Arbor Day for 2025. Resolution designating the-
Wrong one? I don't think it's in there.
No, it's in here?
No, no, not in his folder.
Oh, okay. No, it's not here?
Can you put it on?
It's in the agenda pack.
In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable, a renewable resource, giving us paper wood for our, and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, John Scott, old mayor of the city of Shenandoah, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Shenandoah, Texas. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generation dated this eighth day of January, 2025.
So, this proclamation is a requirement to remain a tree city. So, each year, we see this proclaiming that day, the mayor just read for Arbor Day. We do host our Arbor Day event earlier, because we're in Texas, so our season starts a little earlier than most area, other areas in the nation. So, our event will be on March 1st, as we'll have our Arbor Day, but we'll declare, as a mayor, the national Arbor Day as our Arbor Day as well.
Thank you. All right, item number eight, presentation of a year-end summary from the police department. Chief?
So, mayor and council, I want to preface this by just advising about the breach we had with the data breach that we had. So, our CAD system, we were off of the Montgomery County CAD system for six weeks, so because of that, some of our stats are a little down as far as self-initiated activity, but they're definitely on par and on the mark for overall. So, with our calls for ser- can y'all see that? It's pretty small. So, for our calls for service, these are anything that we're dispatched to, there's 3,976, which is up over 400, self-initiated activity. That's anything that is, that the officers do self-initiated, whether it's making a traffic stop that ends up in arrest, or it's finding a suspicious person or a suspicious vehicle. So, that's 1,172. We've only been tracking, tracking that data. We've only been able to track that data accurately for the last two years, so that's the reason why there's no further data. Misdemeanor arrests, you can see that's down, 201. However, our felony arrests are up. That's the third most that we've ever had, which is 186. So, put it in our total arrests at 387. So, if you look at 387, our second highest was 400, being that we are, we're off our CAD system, which put us to where proactivity would be down. We're on par with the third highest amount of total arrests. We're only off 13 there. DWI arrests, we had 86, but that's the third highest that we've had since we've been tracking data from 2011. Self-initiated arrests, again, self-initiated, that's anything the officers are doing that they, those are arrests that they weren't dispatched to, those are arrests that they took it upon themselves to actually hunt down and find these, which you can see, that's over 50% of our arrests are self-initiated arrests, and that's where we want to keep that. We want to keep that above, we don't want it to be where the majority of our arrests come from, dispatch arrests, because if that happens, then we're not being proactive, we're being reactive, and then we're behind the eight ball on that. So, we want to stay proactive, and those numbers show that. So, 212 self-initiated arrests versus 175 dispatched, dispatched arrests. Our incident reports, again, they were up from last year, but at 718, but as you can see, that's still in the last four years, we've still been pretty, pretty high in those. Crash reports, that's the, this last year was the highest amount of crash reports we've ever had, at 477. So, if you want to know where a lot of our time is being spent, we're taking a lot of accident on the interstate, a lot. So-
Who has the main jurisdiction on the interstate? Is that DPS?
Well, they have, so, of course, the state owns the, you know, but it's in our jurisdiction, so we take those. Now, being that that's 477 crash reports, DPS and the county has assisted us with numerous crashes, because we get tied up on stuff, and we've had to call them and ask them to come assist us and stuff like that. So, if we're tied up on arrests or whatever, then we have to call them periodically and have them come take the crash report. So, even that, you know, we still had 477 that we took, so that's, that's an astounding amount. But, so our total, if you look at the incident reports and crash reports, that's how many total together that we had. So, 2021, there was 1,235 total reports, 2022, 1,244, 2023, 1,039, and then this last year, we had 1,195 total reports that the officers did. Total traffic stops, you can see this, this last year, we had the most amount of traffic stops we've ever had was 4,894. And then our residential traffic stops, it wasn't as much as last year, but it's still extremely high compared to previous years. We had 728 residential traffic stops. As you can see, and our third highest that we had was in 2022, which was 424, so, you know, we had 728 residential traffic stops. We had quite a bit.
And that's with, without having numbers recorded for six weeks on it because of the CAD system being out, right? So, if the CAD system was up, how much do you think the traffic stops in the neighborhoods would be?
I can't guesstimate what our, what our stats would be with the CAD system for that six weeks, but I know our, the stats would be up a lot. In January, we only had 12 arrests, because the CAD system, they were all call-initiated arrests, so it's, it's very difficult to predict that, but the data, as far as our self-initiated activity, such as traffic stops and everything, would have been dramatically higher, especially those arrests and stuff like that. The first two, first two months of the year was difficult, not being on the CAD system. When you're on paper and you're trying to, you know, trying to work on paper, off paper and not on the CAD system, the dispatchers don't like it, because you're having to call them and run everything through them, and they don't, they don't like that.
From a personal testimonial, I happened to ride with your police officers twice during that period, once during the day on a day shift and once for a night shift, and each of the officers reported to me that it was a booger to keep up with everything. They would try to call into central dispatch to report a crime, to find out what was going on, got no response, they couldn't, everything was backed up. They personally told me they could not get to record all of the things that they were doing. It was just a plain fact of life, because the system was down.
Yes, it was definitely a pain for the guys, and I hated it for them.
I submit to you that the number of stops was significantly higher than what this report says.
Yes.
I know you'd like to be accurate, perfect, but-
Yes, it would, it would be definitely higher along with our arrests. We would have definitely beat that 400 total arrests. I have no doubt, because our average is, you know, we averaged around 35, so, you know, we only had 12 in January. So, going on to the, the next, the next forum, do y'all have that data? The burglary of motor vehicles? Okay. As you can see, it's, it's down for, the BMV stands for burglary of motor vehicles, it's cars have been broken down, broken into. As you can see, it's, it's down significantly from last year. We have 45 total, and for the area, that's really good. BMV reports decline. This is people that called us and said, hey, somebody went through my car, whatever, but they didn't want to file a report, because nothing was missing. BMV office, offense reports, this is actually the actual reports that were taken, 42. Burglary of motor vehicles in the neighborhood, we have zero. In the apartment complexes, we had two, and in burglary of a building, we have five, which is significantly less than what we've been having in the last few years. Burglary, a burglary of a building in the residential, we had none. Burglary of a habitation, we had four. Most of those, well, two of those were in the, one was an apartment complex, which we're sure was possibly an insurance job. Another one was at Centro, somebody left a garage door open, somebody took some items. We had one in the valley, the one that was in the valley, the subjects are in jail at this time, and then we had another one that was a subdivision off of Grogan's Mill, and there were some extenuating circumstances in that incident, but the property has been recovered on that. Misdemeanor thefts were down significantly, down to 50. Felony thefts were down a little bit from last year, they're still, still high, but a lot of the thefts that are happening from Home Depot and stuff, they always end up in a felony charge, so that's where you get a lot of that. So, we have 116. That's, that's all the data that I have for, for this. Do y'all have any questions about anything else?
Chief, when did you take over?
I took over in 2020.
And what did you change as far as the way that you approach crime?
So, the approach on crime, there was an old adage of doing things, and the new way of doing things is you focus your effort primarily where you have a combination of your, your accident area plus your high crime area. So, once we started focusing on that, we noticed that was what carried over into the residential area, as far as we noticed that the crimes started going down in the residential area. And overall, our crime has been pretty good, steadily dropping since we've had that police focus.
So, you're attacking the criminals before they make it into the residence?
We're attacking the criminals where the majority of the crime happened. So, let's say, we all know Home Depot is a big hotspot. So, I-45 and Home Depot is, is an area you focus along with, at 45 and Research Forest is also an area where we get a lot of accidents on the interstate and stuff. So, you focus in that area, and that helps to reduce crime. But staying proactive is the other thing, reducing the amount of extra activities outside of law enforcement. We were spending a lot of time in the woodlands, patrolling the town center. We were spending a lot of times doing other programs and stuff, and that was taking away time from actually being proactive and getting out there and stopping crime. The more time you have free and you get guys out there, because guys, that's what they want to do when you get into law enforcement, you want that freedom to go out there and actually apprehend people. So, if you encourage that behavior by, by reducing the amount of unnecessary things that you have to do, then it encourages those guys to, to go out there and actively look, and that's, that's reflective in the amount of arrests you could see from self-initiated versus the, the call-responsive calls, arrests. So, as long as those maintain a higher rate than our, our calls, then we're at where we need to be.
And balancing your enforcement efforts, not only in the commercial sector but also in the, in the residential sector?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. You have to, you have to focus where, primarily focus where the crime is at, but it's secondary, it reduces the crime everywhere else. But we try to balance out, and Lieutenant Reivers and I have been really pushing on the guys, I just balance everything out with traffic enforcement where we're doing it, and so that's not just one or two guys doing traffic enforcement, somewhat, we want to balance it out to where everybody's doing their equal share in it for everywhere.
And when you get these criminals, I've heard that most of them come from Harris County, because they let them go over there pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
They don't go to jail. What do your officers tell your, everyone that they arrest?
Our motto is let them know where they're at. That's on, above, it's above the door in the patrol room, and it's on the, it's on our challenge coin as well.
And the officers are proud of that, and they tell everybody they arrest, you know where you're at. It's Montgomery County.
I hope so, I hope so.
Don't come back.
Yes, sir.
Stay out of those neighborhoods.
Are there any additional questions about the, on this subject?
Chief, the patrol effort to have high visibility has always been, I think, a staple for police agencies, so with the success you're having, the apprehensions, how much of an impact is that having on your ability to maintain a good level of visibility, and do you see some additional needs for resources in the future?
At this time, I think we're fairly good this time. As long as I continue to see that, that arrest ratio of being proactive above, we do have a position that needs to be filled on one of the shifts, we're, we're one less, and I would like to see it equal across the board, so we have all shifts have the same amount of personnel. I would like to get to that point, but I, we're pretty good right now as far- I would like to get to that point, but we're pretty good right now as far as that goes. Yes, sir.
Do you have any takes on that open position?
Well, we do still have an open position, but what I'm referring to is the fact that we have three, three shifts have five personnel and then one shift has four. And I would like to have eventually get that fifth spot.
Councilmember, during the budget workshop, we talked about that, that additional position. At the time, because of the uncertainty with two of our restaurants filing bankruptcy and with some other businesses delayed opening, we decided to bring that back mid-year for approval. So that will be probably at the end of February, beginning of March, we'll bring that position back for approval.
That's for a new position?
It was deferred, yes.
And that's in addition to the one you're trying to fill now?
Yes, sir.
You have many applicants so far?
Not too terribly many, but we are picking.
And we should be.
We're very picky.
All of our vehicles are GPS tracked, correct?
Yes, sir.
So would we do a call or a stop? Are those geo-tagged? Do you know where you did the stop? Because what I'm envisioning is essentially a map that would be able to show residents like, hey, this is where they've been pulling over people speeding. This is where they've been catching people doing traffic offenses in the valley or in the commercial areas. Do we have that capability and can we get that capability?
So I would prefer not to show any type of GPS data to outside law enforcement personnel because that's a safety risk to the officers if you think about it. Because some officers stick to patterns and some of them don't. And I would prefer that data not be utilized by anybody outside of law enforcement.
But you're able to have it for operational analysis and planning and all of that?
For us, absolutely, yes. Yes, I can look at the data and I can, yes, sir, absolutely 100%.
I agree with the chief. I wouldn't want that information out here, putting out all the state manager where they hide.
No, we're only talking about like where they...
Well, I mean, like, yeah, for them to see or whatever. I'm just saying like for, there was the outpost, like, is the city PSA or something? I think he's 100% correct about that is, like, some things the residents don't need to know and other people that, you know...
And some is nice to know. That's all I'm saying.
Well, this is great. We get to see the statistics and we get to hear what he has to say and all that. So, yeah, this is great, too.
Is that it, chief?
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? None? Thank you, chief. Item number nine, discussion of possible action to approve a contract with the Shenandoah Sharks.
Mayor and council, a little background information on this. I know there's some people here just speak about it. So staff's been working with the Sharks to develop a new five-year contract. The old contract expired in the end of December of 2024. And I want to point out, most of the language is the same between the contracts. So I've got a few bullet points that I'll go over to draw out the differences between last year's contract and the contract before you now. So the first is there was a rate increase to cover the additional costs and inflation from the pre-COVID totals because the first contract, the contract just expired in 2019 is when it started. So that rate is going to be a flat rate for the entire five-year term. So that's a little different. The previous contract, we did a 2% increase year over year, just to kind of cover inflation costs, things like that. 2% is a good number. We get that from the feds. But this one will just be a flat rate for the entire five-year term. It just kind of simplifies billing and some of those calculations in that regard. Also, penalty fees were added if the tenant is using the property outside of the rental time. So for example, if a practice runs late or a swim event starts too early and that overlaps when the pool is open to the general public, there can be penalty fees assessed because we want to make sure that when the pool's open for the public, they can use it. Also, the discount rate was increased from a one-to-one ratio to a one to 1.5. So the discount rate is basically based on the number of Shenandoah residents that are on the team. So I'll use last year an example, there's about 14% of the team were Shenandoah residents. So they would see a 14% discount on their total bill. And that's just something that's been in all the contracts because we want to encourage Shenandoah residents to be on the team and it's a great discount for the Sharks. This year, with the one to 1.5 ratio, basically if they have 14% of their swimmers are Shenandoah residents, they'll get a 21% decrease because of that greater ratio. So we wanted to help incentivize and get some more residents on the team. We also added a stipulation regarding using the pool for paid coaching outside of the rental times, just because that was an occurrence. I don't know if that's, I think it was a particular coach who's not there anymore, but it was just a concern that came up. And then lastly, we also added reserved spots for Shenandoah residents. So the current contract matches the previous where there's that two-week early registration period for residents. And basically, if a resident wants to be on the team and they register in that, within that two-week period, as long as there's no safety concerns for the Sharks, they're on the team. After that early registration period has ended, then it opens to anybody to join the Sharks. So we added some reserved spots, 10, so that even if maybe a resident just, you know, lost her mind or whatever it may have been, but they're a week late on registering, there'll be spots reserved for them. Now, those reservation, those reserved spots do end before the season starts. That way the Sharks can fill, they don't have vacancies, so they can fill those spots with anybody at that time. So those are the, those are the major changes between the last contract and what you have before you.
Joseph, what was the rate in the old contract?
The old contract, so it's, so we have, we usually bill in either 200 or 250-hour groups, but we do discount if they don't use all of those hours. So if they used all of the hours on the original contract, it was about $43 per hour, which totals out to, I'd have to multiply that out. 43 times 250.
10,750. $1,750.
Hold on, that's not right. Sorry, those are our costs back then. It's 38, $38 per hour, which is about 9,700.
So it's going from $38 an hour to 76?
Yes, that's the rate change that's on the new contract.
Pretty hefty increase.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I'm not going to, it's double what it was during the last five-year term. We have had significant cost increases with our lifeguard pay, which is the bulk of our expenses. So what we staff tried to do is look at what our expenses are currently, which, again, the bulk of that is personnel costs, but you got to have lifeguards at these events and at the practices. And then also operating costs. And I've got those numbers here. So our costs is just over $60 for just our staff and then an additional $6 for the chemicals, wear and tear, et cetera. So our costs are just over $66 per hour. So I guess I tell you that because this was the thinking to get to that $76. So we took that cost of what the city pays just to manage this hour to hour and then added a 15% inflation buffer because, like I said, this is a flat rate. And that's what, that's how we got to the $76 per hour.
I noticed, too, there was, you mentioned penalties have been added to the contract. Is that because of abuses?
There were some situations in the past where events ran long or they showed up early before their event was scheduled. And it was a concern. It was an issue that residents raised throughout the last contract, which is, you know, after discussing that with legal, we decided to add those penalties just to try to keep that, the time where the rental is agreed upon, to keep the tenant within those bounds.
Pretty significant penalties.
They are.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we, could I request that we let and afford Jessica and Mike to speak before we put motion?
Absolutely. If you would, would one of you like to, Mr. McLeod? By the way, welcome to your old turf.
Thank you, yeah. Good to be back in here. Say hi to everybody. I'm going to be speaking from, just to be clear, again, from a historical perspective, kind of how we did things when I first joined the team, as I became president, and then as we passed it on. So if you want to talk about current, it's just happened in the recent years. I'm willing to address those questions to Jessica. When we first joined the team, that was back in 2007. We moved here to 2008 was our first season with the team. Lifeguards weren't there, the coaches were lifeguards. We had a cost offset, which is like $25 for non-residents. And so there was a fee for the team, you know, pay the coaches and pay the in-wall fees and the various other things, T-shirts, whatever else goes on with the team. And then there was a, the city recovered $25 for non-residents. And that seemed to work well and everybody was kind of happy with that. And then as I took over as president, some of you are familiar with the story where we were approached and suddenly said, hey, we've got to have, you got to have a lease. And the Sharks, rather than being treated as a long-term partner, as a community service group, began being treated as a tenant. And that's, and that's really, and I've talked to Joseph and Jessica and Kathy, and one of the things that I want us to do with the Sharks is bring them back into a partnership. And that's one of the things I asked us to do at the beginning of the meeting is do what we have to do to get us back to being a partnership. One of the things I want to say is parks never make money. They're supposed to be there to service the community. And having the Sharks available is available for our residents. And so I do like having the, some of the language available so we can increase that availability. Is a public good and it makes people want to live in our community, to have a children's program in our community. They don't have to even leave the city to be able to participate in that. One thing I will note is the previous lease had an auto renewal and this one does not. The previous lease had a two-year cancellation so that you had to, the city or the Sharks had to give plenty of notice before they could terminate. And again, I bring that up because we all know how fickle politics can be and it takes one election to be in a position where suddenly all it takes is, you know, three council members changing and we can make a great change. Now, the last time that happened, it was an amazingly positive change. We all got to live through that and that was fantastic. But imagine, imagine if you will, that happens going the other direction. Suddenly our children are left scrambling with nowhere to swim for the summer. So I'd ask, I would ask for that to be included back in the contract. I don't know if anybody else has any specific questions regarding the history. I'll say the Sharks were formed in 1973, which is a year before the city was put into place. The Sharks actually owned and operated the pool until about 1996, when the pool was deeded over to the city. Based on verbal confirmation from people who were around at the time, although I never was able to find written contracts, the terms of that agreement with the Sharks were always be allowed to swim at the pool at no charge. The city's never been able to find their deed stuff and the Shark people I talked to never been able to find theirs other than some IRS tax documents. But everyone sort of agreed that that was the, that was the idea of between deeding the pool over in 96. And it sort of worked that way, again, until the previous city administrator took over. And so I would ask us to consider the possibility of returning to a cost offset model. And that is, the city's going to be taking up the cost. We're simply going to say, look, if you're not a resident here, we're going to ask you to pay a little bit. And whether that number's $40 or $50, rather than setting up a formal lease, we set up a long-term agreement that says, look, we want the Sharks here, we love the Sharks, the Sharks provide a great service to our community, but we're going to ask the non-residents to pay a, to pay a fee.
I have a question about tournaments. You have competitions, is that correct?
Yes, yes, we will have, we'll have dual meets. The Sharks have dual meets and we have, depending upon how the season goes, four to five dual meets and then, or five to six dual meets. Is that right? No, five.
Six, well, including our practice meet.
A practice meet, okay.
Six meets.
And so three of them, three to four of them will be hosted here and then the remainder will be hosted at the other team's pool. And then we'll have a divisional meet, which will be hosted typically at one of the larger pools, auditorium, a high school, something like that, or at one of the local, one of the larger...
Do those meets draw people from other areas?
Yep.
And do they stay here or do they...
Absolutely. So they don't, they don't stay in a hotel, but we do bring large groups of people in from places as far away as Spring Cypress, as High Meadow Ranch. And these people bring their kids and bring their hungry kids. They come into the city, they get to see Shenandoah, they get to see the restaurants that are here, they get to see the shops that are here. And they get to spend their money in Shenandoah, they get to experience Shenandoah, the friendliness of Shenandoah. And many of them comment about how amazing the city is, about how friendly the city is. I know many of us after the meets, after the swim meets, will go eat at our restaurants. I know the Sharks purchase their concessions from our local restaurants, from Sam's, from Kane's and other restaurants. I'm sure Jessica can tell you specifically. But yeah, there you go there, so.
All of our concession food comes from Shenandoah, right?
So it's safe to say that the activities actually contribute to the local economy?
Absolutely, both directly in terms of the spend, the direct spending I'm talking about, but also the advertising. We have, I think, roughly 200 swimmers and those swimmers have families, many of them have siblings. I think we will order over about 600 shirts at least that all say Shenandoah. It's the first thing on their shirt, says Shenandoah. And so you've got 600 shirts all over the community. We actually have some pictures on our Shenandoah Facebook, the Sharks Facebook page with kids wearing shirts in Japan. So we're advertising Shenandoah literally all over the world. And so, again, all of this is being done currently at literally no cost to the city. And I think that's a goodwill program from that perspective and simply to provide, again, provide the community outreach. We all know community doesn't stop at Research and community doesn't stop at Johnson Road and community doesn't, doesn't stop at Grogan's Mill. Our community is wider, is wider than that. And so that's why I'm asking that we sort of, again, it's a philosophy that I'm asking us to think about changing. It's not really the numbers and cents. Obviously, the Sharks would like the numbers and cents, but it's really much more of a philosophy that I'm asking for.
However, on a dollars and cents thing, an image thing, an advertising thing, where you have all these people coming in, not only from out of, out of our neighborhoods to see Shenandoah, get close to Shenandoah, they're seeing your big tent that promotes Shenandoah, the T-shirts, the hats, not just here, but all over the community. And whenever we travel to Glenlock Farms or Sci Fair or places like that, they're getting exposure to all of our shirts and advertising that is a very big value in my mind. I think that with y'all representing us, as well as you represent us especially, it really is a big, big benefit for our community, dollars and cents wise. It'll bring more people in here to shop, to spend money, maybe not stay in hotels all the time, but maybe sometime they do, too. It's hard to tell.
Yeah, maybe they do.
Can I ask a question? And we do use this money to make the program the best we can. So it is, it is required to have the nice scoreboard, to have the best coaches, to have the best opportunities for all our kids on the team, Shenandoah, non-Shenandoah residents. for all our kids on the team, Shenandoah, non-Shenandoah residents, all of them together. And they're like a big family, so, I mean, like my daughter, we've been on the team 14 years, and I feel like, you know, I'm part of a resident. I mean, Mike is the one that actually got me on the team. But now I'm the president, so I've been on the president five years now. And so we do sometimes, you know, the pool's hidden, so we do find it harder to find, sometimes people think it is only a Shenandoah team, and so, but we do need all, since it costs so much and takes so many volunteers, we do need outside residents, unfortunately, you know. It'd be awesome if we could just have, you know, all Shenandoah kids, but we do have, these kids go to school together, so, I mean, they're all Woodlands, Shenandoah, they're all friends, I mean, they're all classmates, so.
Jessica, will you tell me, tell us about the sponsorships that you offer?
Yeah, so we do have sponsorships that we offer, like, this is what we do, included in our budget, to meet our budget, to break even. We do have to go out and solicit sponsors, and so, like, we do have sponsorship packages from $2,500 to $300, and that's actually how we meet our budget, and pay for our coaches, and pay our lease. And, you know, Joseph has done a wonderful job, like, he's probably tired of me, but he's been talking to me for five years now, and we, you know, he's doing a great job of trying, trying to, to help the Sharks and work with the Sharks, but this specific contract is almost too high for us to afford for the long term. Especially, you know, I mean, as our team gets older, we have to recruit little kids. And so we have, like, the most 15 to 18-year-olds in the entire in-wall, and those kids keep graduating. So we need.
I want to speak to that.
Yeah.
So one of the things that most teams have trouble with is retaining 15 to 18-year-olds. And because we have such a good program, so because we have such an excellent coaching staff, and because we have such excellent and excellent community here, we've actually retained those, and so many times.
Once we cut them.
Yeah, one year we just, we just, we don't have anybody.
We had so many.
Yeah, we actually had to limit 15 to 18-year-olds, and most teams have never, that's unheard of.
Yeah.
Many teams can't, can't set up relays because they don't have enough kids, they only have two or three 15 to 18-year-olds. And so the program that's, that's being produced here, again, by entirely volunteer staff, the coaches are paid, but the whole board is volunteer, and all the other volunteers, the 100-plus volunteers it takes to run a meet, none of them are getting paid. The only people that get paid are the actual coaches that are in the water with the kids, so.
Yeah, we even have mentor coaches, so that's how we, our older kids come, and they actually coach the little ones. Like, my daughter's been one for three or four years, I have other, two more daughters, they're in the water every day for free, so it's kind of like a whole community program to make it operate. And the more expenses go up, the less we have to give to the kids. I mean, it's just the way it is, I mean, I wish, I wish it wasn't, but we are kind of a nonprofit, so.
We are, uh, we're a C3, yeah.
We are a nonprofit, so we do what we can with the little registration fees that we get, and sponsorship.
Mr. Stevens, would you like to add anything before we wrap up this discussion?
Okay.
Yeah. We do have sponsorship packages, though.
Mayor, Council, I've been involved with the Sharks for, I was thinking back as I was sitting there, first got involved in 1998. My wife swam with the Sharks and her sisters since they were little, back in the 70s. We still own a share of the, or have a share of the Shenandoah pool stock that was sold when the residents bought the pool, or funded the pool back in the early 70s. I just want to touch briefly, Mike, Mike makes some great points. The Sharks organization, it's hard to express in terms of brand recognition for Shenandoah, what they represent, with all of those caps and hats and T-shirts and being out in our community. They typically do a fundraiser each year, you gotta do that, the swim-a-thon, where they, where they give money back to the community. Beyond that, there's been a number of children out of that program that go to the next level. One of them was my daughter. Both of my daughters hold school records in Conroe ISD as a result of being in this program. So, and there's many, many more. So, you know, as we've worked to build the brand recognition for Shenandoah, Texas, that's, that's come over time with a lot of effort from a lot of angles. I was, I was at the inauguration for the commissioners January 1st, and I heard Shenandoah mentioned by the county judge in front of 1,000 people four times. That's unprecedented in that audience. Conroe wasn't mentioned, Oak Ridge wasn't mentioned, Shenandoah, four times, because we're out in the community, we're present, and it's things like the Sharks that are helping us get there, and a number of other facets as well. I'd just also like to quickly speak to the budget for community outreach. I really like what the city's done over the years. It started with Safe Street Halloween way back when, we've kind of had to transition from that, because we built it, they came, and it got too big. We had to do something different. We've got Lighting of the Angels, Fall into Fun, Easter Egg Hunt, a number of things that really bring our community out, get them to know each other, put Shenandoah out there in the forefront of the community. And, you know, looking at the budget, there's a total budget of $94,000 for those, oh, eight, nine, 10 events, which I love, I think, I think we should continue to do them. But my request would be that the city think of the Shenandoah Sharks as community outreach as well. Let's think of a creative way to dovetail into that budget somehow. Staff's done a great job paring it down as well as they can. I think if we get creative, there may be more we can do. Rationalize the number of lifeguards, Bill, I know you're going to hate that idea, but there was time when we didn't have any lifeguards, and now we've gone to $60 an hour worth of lifeguard, so can we safely do it somewhere in the middle? So I'll leave it there. Thank you for your time, go Shenandoah Sharks.
Thank you, Ray. All right. I move that we table this and have a chance to discuss what we've heard today, and talk to Joseph and the rest of our team, and see what we can do to come together as a team.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion to table this for future deliberation or discussion by Councilman Pollard, and seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any, any additional discussion?
Will that table hinder you any, hinder the Sharks any, you're not going to?
Well, hinder, I, no, I would go.
We've got time.
Say that again?
Yeah, we've got plenty of time to discuss that.
Okay, that's. I would really like to see us take a different approach.
Okay.
With the Sharks.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to table this item for, for discussion and consideration. Thank you all for coming. All right, we'll move on to item number 10. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution of the City, Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, providing for the appointment to fill the position of Place Three on the Shenandoah Planning and Zoning Commission.
Council, Commissioner Kloninger chose not to be reappointed at the end of his most recent term, so this, the purpose of the resolution is to appoint the replacement for Place Three. And the appointment is for Jennifer Breedlove, who is here with us tonight.
Hi.
Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Rob Kloninger for his service on the Planning and Zoning Commission, he's been an invaluable member. He is moving on to greater things, but that also opens up an opportunity. I'd like to introduce you to Jennifer Breedlove. Jennifer is a longtime resident of Shenandoah, she's a Realtor in the community, she's been in Shenandoah over 10 years, 10 years. She's been a member of the community much longer than that. She's also graduated, I believe, Texas A&amp;M, and so she's a wonderful person with a lot of knowledge in the real estate industry, and just always a forward thinker. She runs a very interesting nonprofit as well, doing work in Haiti, and providing safe, safe living and education for a group of children there, and that's something she spearheads and does big fundraiser each year, and it's admirable work. But that's who Jennifer is, I'm proud to present her, and please, please ask her any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Get her the work.
Where's Annie today?
Probably in the backyard.
So can I have a motion?
I'll move. Do we accept this recommendation to appoint?
We have a motion to approve the recommendation for, to fill Position Three in Planning and Zoning by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, welcome aboard.
I didn't mean to put you too far.
I can see you sense the need.
All right, we're going to move on to item number 11. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, providing for the holding of a general election to be held on May 3rd, 2025, for the purpose of electing three council members' positions two, three, and four, and providing details relating to the holding of such elections.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Councilman Bratt.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with this, we launch the campaign. So get ready for those, those up for election, get ready. Item 12. Discussion and possible action to approve the following agreements with Montgomery County for the May 3rd, 2025 city general election. Election Services Agreement and Joint Election Agreement. Have a motion.
Again, so moved?
Second. A motion to approve by Councilman Bratt, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion?
Is there any increases in their fees?
It's a, the election is a shared cost, so it depends on what other elections are going on, so if there's a, it's a shared cost. So some years we don't have elections, so the cost for other entities is going to be higher, and then when there's a lot on there, it's lower for us.
How much does it cost us to have an election?
It averages about $16,000.
That's, only if it's for us, is that correct?
Uh, no, I believe there was a mud also.
The ocean.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
We budget that much.
Our share.
Because we don't really always know how it's going to go, so we prepare for about $16,000. But as Lacey has said, at the end of the election, they reconcile everything and they tell us what our portion is.
But if there's not an election, we don't get charged anything?
Correct.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13. Discussion and possible action regarding an interlocal agreement with TIPS-USAA purchasing co-op.
Mayor and Council, just for a little backstory, purchasing cooperatives are an agreement that multiple government entities will enter into to collectively demand for lower cost for some goods and services, and it helps out everyone to acquire those goods and services at discounted competitive rates. It also helps suffice the competitive bidding requirement for purchases over $50,000. As you've seen in your package today, TIPS USA is one of the top three purchasing co-ops nationally. Due to how it is, it is compiled, we do have to enter into an interlocal. We are part of Byboard and the Texas Co-op, which is ran by the comptroller. Those do not require an interlocal, but this one does because of the structure. I'm open for any questions about anything. It costs the city nothing to be part of this as well.
What did you, what did you just last say?
Oh, it doesn't cost us anything to be part of this.
Then I don't need to answer, okay.
Answer my question.
And this was necessitated because of what?
So we are looking at some vehicle purchases, I've talked to several of the dealerships that we got quotes from, they are now favoring the TIPS Byboard, not Byboard, sorry, I don't want to confuse you, the TIPS co-op instead of Byboard, due to it's a little bit more functional, and there's more response from TIPS with negotiations.
And this all came out of when Councilman Bratt found additional vehicles that we could purchase?
It was, it was a part of it, however, I have been in communication with our area region representative, I met her at TML one year. We've been kind of looking at options, we don't have a dedicated procurement team, so we are, you know, finance team's a little bit smaller, so we focus on what's needed at that time. There is also another, one of the other big three, so Byboard, TIPS USA, and then Choice Partners is the third largest one nationally. They have reached out to me as well, and we are setting a meeting up, it was just the holidays were too chaotic to try to get that. But we are exploring these options, especially with procurement law. It makes more sense for us as a smaller city to take advantage of these advantageous lower competitive bidding co-ops.
So right now, who's the SME for purchasing?
So right now, we have a decentralized purchasing structure in the city, due to our size and the requirement for internal controls and surrogation duties. Lacey Davis is our payroll clerk and our accounts payable clerk, but each department does make purchases on behalf of themselves. They are required to obtain quotes for certain purchases over, I believe it's $3,000, and they report back to Lacey. These larger purchases obviously are scrutinized higher than your lower purchases. Staff does a really good job at, you know, looking at all vendors when we're making these decisions, but that is how the structure in the finance department is. At the end of the day, Lacey oversees them, but each department can make their own purchases.
So like, what else are we not uncovering? Because like, I never heard of TIPS before, this agenda item, so are there other buying services that we investigate, that we should investigate?
So we, when I took over, the only one we were part of was Byboard. Tammy worked really hard when she was overpurchasing the AP process, and she got us on the Texas Co-op, to the comptroller. Choice Partners, we've been, we've been talking, it's just the timing has not worked out right now to talk and try to figure out membership on that one. There are several, and a lot of smaller ones, and it's with co-ops especially, there's ones that focus just on school districts, there's ones that are just for counties, one for cities, you know, there's a lot of, and some are state-specific, some are national. So with the top three, you're going to get the best priority, because you're going to have a representative that helps you most of the time, and kind of acts as like a fourth employee, you know, I mean, another employee, because they will help you negotiate some of the bids, they'll help you search out some better bids, stuff like that. So for a smaller city, for us, it's great, because it helps us to be competitive and make sure that we're being the best stewards of funds that we can, you know, with, when we have to purchase items and services that are not.
TIPS falls into that category?
Yes. Me and, our representative's name is Lindsay, she actually lives in the Woodlands, she's very nice, and the, just from my initial discussions with her, they seem a lot more proactive than Byboard at this point. The Texas Co-op is also more of a self-management, but I think corporate partners and TIPS have more, this, this is kind of their business model.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that, that there's oversight, that we've got silos of different people doing purchases, to make sure that there's accountability in one place. Ultimately, that accountability right now is.
Our policy says that if it's over $3,000, there has to be three quotes, and Lacey bets those from them.
So Lacey goes through all the quotes?
Yes, they're communicating with her, and she makes sure that they're going with the best price. There will be situations, obviously, if we have a vendor of choice, there are certain vendors that know our, you know, especially in Joseph's territory in Water Sewer, they are going to know our system the best, and the amount of time that we would reduce trying to explain certain things saves us money that way. They may not be the lowest cost, but they are going to be the most advantageous for us because of the, we know the quality of work as well.
Okay.
Any additional discussion?
Well, I think I'd like to add that the best thing for the police department is to take advantage of TIPS, because they could, in the discussion with Chief Dunlap, that if we get a process where they can turn these cars and make the most money out of them and get new ones, that we'd have an opportunity to order, know when we're going to do it, order them, they'll be in the, in the system, and we're not hunting for vehicles like we are right now. That's the biggest thing, so you know, pretty much know what's going on, which is right in line with what Councilman Raymaker was inquiring about, that's the other side of it.
Well, thank you for. Well, thank you for digging in and finding this.
Yes, absolutely.
And as we're getting into more purchasing of bigger items, obviously, there's gonna be more opportunities to join some co-ops, and that's, and we'll bring that to you when we encounter that, but for the majority of the time, these big three ones are gonna be your most competitive.
All right.
I have a question. As far as maintenance, when it comes to dealing with purchasing vehicles, important part is keeping the vehicles running at their best, and my question is, in this co-op, is there a portion of this also a partnership with a localized maintenance group, if you will, that's reputable?
So we, we've explored that option. I'm not sure if TIPS has like that service, we can look into it, however, I know we currently use Conroe Fleet, they're very competitive, they have the inventory that we'll need consistently because they service other municipalities and jurisdictions, especially with police cars, they have sometimes different requirements, and we've been happy with Conroe Fleet. It's close, it's relative, you know, and their service has been fine. The rates did go up a little bit this year, but that's just expected because everything has gone up. Unfortunately, it's where we're at, so we're pretty happy with them. We can explore that, but I think I kind of let, I don't have to deal with vehicles, thankfully, but these two gentlemen have to mostly, so I let them kind of tell me what works best for them.
I was just gonna add, their turnaround is really quick, which is really important when you're counting on that truck to, you know, haul your staff around to get to the jobs they need to, so.
Yeah.
They do a really good job, and they're fast, which is important.
Good. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Have a motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve.
Interlocal agreement.
The interlocal agreement with TIPS USA purchasing, by Councilman Pollard. You have a second by Councilman Summerlin? Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14. Discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of police vehicles.
Mayor and council, as you've seen in your agenda pack, Councilmember Brott was able to locate a Chevy, Chevrolet Tahoe and a Silverado police package vehicle for purchase for Lieutenant Reivers and Chief Dunlap's vehicles. Little backstory, they do drive the oldest vehicles in the fleet. Chief Dunlap's Tahoe's engine did explode, is now inoperable, and Lieutenant Reivers' vehicle has had several issues, it had a transmission repaired already, but due to the wear and tear, and also the engine hours, we're recommending these be replaced. So we did get several quotes. Councilmember Brott did secure the quote from Sillsby Chevrolet, which is a TIPS contract. Lieutenant Reivers did reach out to get some more quotes to be, to make sure that we're competitive on that one, and he reached out to reliable Chevrolet that provided quotes, and they are also with TIPS. Keaton Chevrolet did respond, however, they don't have a co-op, and because now the chassis price is above 50,000, state procurement losses, I would have to go out for bid to purchase that, which, right now with the scarcity of Tahos that we've seen pretty much for the last five years, dealerships are not going to bid, they're going to want to try to sell to who they can sell, they don't want to hold the vehicles too long and not, and miss a chance for, you know, sale. And then in addition, on that last column you'll see there, we have previously used Sidons Martin for our outfits, we are looking to use Dana Safety, this is going to be our first time with them, they are, they are very highly recommended, they are a little bit cheaper than Sidons Martin, and so you'll see those costs to the right.
You have a motion?
A move that we approve the purchase of two police vehicles.
A motion to approve the purchase of these police vehicles by Councilman Pollard. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Councilman Brott. Any additional discussion?
Out of curiosity then, what happened to the lease options that were presented the prior two months? I was expecting to see a promised cost savings for leasing.
So the, the feedback we got from the last two meetings was that that lease program did not seem advantageous for council to approve. Councilmember Brott has connections in the car business and was able to secure these two vehicles, and because of the scarcity, we wanted to take advantage of it as soon as we could. Doesn't mean we can't bring the lease items back later for other vehicles, we can look at that. Just for the time being, we really do need to replace the chief's vehicle, it's inoperable, and he's using one of their pool cars, which they use for training and traveling, so he's taking a car out of the fleet that's used for other things, which is gonna put more wear and tear on our patrol vehicles that are on the street today, so we're trying to off-balance that.
We could definitely look at leasing, but a more structured lease where we know what, what we're, what we have, what vehicles we have, not hypothetical.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, what I was told was, yeah, to expect savings and.
We can look at that again?
Yeah.
No problem.
Mm-hmm. I know Joseph's very interested, looking at leased vehicles for public works.
And then, and then lastly, on December 17th, I requested some data that came out of the last meeting we had in December, and I was wondering what the target date to complete that data request was.
So I had reached out to Conroe Fleet, of course, like every other one, for the past two weeks, everyone's been on vacation, so their supervisor.
I'm allowing for that.
Yeah, we need to, we need to discuss me and their supervisor to figure out what their, what they can output on their reports, how we can filter it, and then my plan is to meet with each department head, once I know what they can produce, and say, what is useful for you? Because we, we don't need every nut and bolt, right? We, we need to know the, the meat. So that was gonna be more of a, with Jackie, Joseph, and Troy, because they're the only three that manage vehicles in the city, figure out a good, create kind of a database through Excel, my accountant will be responsible for updating it continuously, every month when Fleet sends the reports, and then I get to have the fun of creating metrics and pivot tables and everything else that no one else wants to do. So that's where we're at on that, and then that will be.
You need to delegate that.
Yeah, well, yeah, pivot tables are a little confusing.
Other people need to learn.
Yes. So that's our plan right now, and, you know, the Christmas holidays really postpone a lot, unfortunately, it's just, you know, everyone's trying to burn their time at the end of the year. Jackie and Lacy were pretty on top of that this year with everyone, so we will be exploring that probably within the next month or two, once everything settles with everything else that's been kind of piling up.
Yeah, because you'd gotten a nice, I'll say it's a nice, it was a lot of raw data.
Yeah, it was, it was not organized.
But there were, but there were no data mapping, so it's like, a lot of columns, what is that column? And you could guess, but you couldn't be sure.
Yeah, and their formatting was just not great, so like, it was, it was pulling stuff in that it would be pulling, so I needed to talk. Fleet has recently, they don't use Incode anymore, they have moved to a different software, I found that out at the GFOA meeting when I talked to one of the accountants at Conroe. So they're still learning on the report inside how to run certain things and what it can pull, so we will be in communication with them.
Okay. Can y'all make a, make a note to give us an update on this every month until it's ready?
Yeah. I'll send it via email.
Well, before we move on on this item here, I just want to clarify on the past item, the sale, the purchase of these police vehicles, that is from the vendor that you stated, which is?
Sillsby.
Sillsby.
Mm-hmm.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
To clarify that.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. And the second as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional discussion on this, on this item?
And to approve the purchase of the outfit as well from Dana Safety? Okay.
I'll say publicly to the chief that once we approve that and they get the PO, you'll have the vehicles delivered here in two weeks.
Very good, thank you.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, that is fantastic.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, authorizing participation with other Entergy Service Area cities in matters concerning Entergy Texas Incorporated at the Public Utility Commission of Texas in 2025, authorizing the hiring of lawyers and rate experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act and declaring an effective date.
Motion to approve. I know it's maintenance, I've been seeing it a lot over the years. You can, you can, you can complete saying that.
This is our annual renewal of our participation in the steering, city steering committee. As you know, the Lawton Law Firm represents this, the steering committee, and monitors utilities and the rate, the proposed rates and increases, and then advises us on what position they recommend that we take, such as opposing rate increases, et cetera.
Right.
And sometimes it's just a matter of postponing those rate increases, so that's, as you know, the purpose.
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Brott. Any additional discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution designating the Courier as the official newspaper for the City of Shenandoah, Texas.
Gentlemen, this is yet another housekeeping issue that we do annually, and it, we have to, it's a requirement that renew, renew every year our official newspaper, and the Courier is the only daily, and so we have to, we still have to legally post notices in a newspaper, so that is the publication that works for our needs.
What is, what's the latest out of Austin on not having to do that requirement anymore, and just do everything online?
Unfortunately, we still have to, because we would love to, to not have to, because there's a, a significant cost involved in publishing those notices.
The Daily Newspaper Association has a very, very strong lobby that keeps this in there. They work very hard at it.
They should partner with travel and tourism.
Unfortunately, I wish that we could award this to Community Impact Newspaper, but we can't.
We would love to.
So it has to be Conroe Courier, and I move that we accept the Conroe, that we designate the Conroe Courier as the city's official newspaper.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Courier as the official newspaper of the City of Shenandoah by Councilman Pollard.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Councilman Summerlin. Any additional comments? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We've got four ayes and one nay. Motion carries. Item 17. City Administrator Updates.
Council, I have just a couple of quick things. First of all, the polar bear plunge was held last Saturday at the pool, we had a record-breaking crowd, over 100 people were in attendance, and about 50 people made the plunge, so another successful event. And secondly, we would like to show you our latest promotional video that we've completed, we still have another one that's in, in production, so Chris is gonna queue that up.
In Shenandoah, we value the safety and security provided by our police department, so today we are going to highlight the jobs these dedicated men and women perform for our community. Meet our K-9 unit, an integral part of our team. This is Diesel, he is an exceptional K-9, trained in apprehending potentially dangerous suspects until an officer can safely take them into custody. Nothing can get away from his bite. Though he looks scary, Diesel's a true protector and a loyal partner in ensuring public safety. And here's Maui. With an incredible sense of smell, Maui can smell the equivalent of a single drop of blood in an Olympic swimming pool. Good luck trying to hide anything from this drug-sniffing expert. Maui makes our job easier. With his help, we can combat drug crimes and keep dangerous substances off our streets. Our patrol unit is always on the move, dedicated to serving and protecting every corner of the city. From traffic stops to responding to emergencies, our officers are trained to handle every situation with care. We believe in proactive policing. By working together with the community, we can prevent crime before it happens. That's why we are committed to building strong connections. Your safety is our top priority. Behind the scenes, our criminal investigation department works diligently to solve crimes. These skilled detectives are dedicated to uncovering the truth. From gathering evidence to interviewing witnesses, our investigative team is on the job. We take every case seriously, whether it's property crime or more complex investigations. We're here to help whenever and wherever possible. Together, we are the Shenandoah Police Department, dedicated to protecting Shenandoah. Follow us on social media and stay connected. Together, we can make Shenandoah a safer place for all.
Excellent.
I like that.
Thank Troy, she'd get an Oscar for that.
And Wendy.
And Wendy.
Yeah, and Wendy.
That was a bad-looking driver you stopped there, chief.
Will you be signing autographs?
All right, we're gonna move on to council inquiry. Councilman Raymaker.
I got a hodgepodge today. When will MDD be repaid for the water projects? Do we have a target date for that?
Can I respond, or am I allowed to respond? Okay. I can, okay.
You're the responder.
I don't know. Okay, so your next meeting, I believe, is in February?
Yes.
So I have it on, I have it restricted in the Water Sewer Fund, so it's not part of its unavailable cash. We can bring it back for your review if you would like. I just was gonna keep it till the end of the project, because that was kind of the direction we had from MDD at one point. We had a direction that they didn't want repaid at all, so I was gonna bring it back as an agenda item, once we get closer and, to the end of some of the bigger projects, we can release funds and bring some funds in.
It'll be budgeted before you know it.
Yeah, so, yeah, because there are some.
Somehow I can imagine a half million dollars coming in handy.
Yeah, so we were gonna bring it back, because as we're getting finished provision parks, some of the other projects that MDD has funded, there might be some that have come under budget, or, you know, over budget, just to justify everything, and then we could talk about that point if you would like to.
Okay, hey, I just wanted to give you a heads up about it, that I'd be asking about that. It's that time of year, have we received our Tacus Performance Metrics and subscriber list? And what's the next threshold of subscribers where we'll see a decrease in our bills?
We have not. I can reach out again to Hal, we had some conversations with him, I guess it was last fall, and he was in a, a state of transition, and he was gonna consult his board on a few things, so I'll follow up with him.
It's getting to be where I'm one of the few left that actually remembers when that took place.
I remember.
What's the next municipal court date?
That should be on our website, I believe court meets about four times a year.
I think it's quarterly, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head, but it's.
I thought, I thought it was like, only doing twice a year at this point, but.
No, I think, I think last year maybe it was, Jackie could tell me for sure, but I think it may have only been three times.
Because we, we have a new judge and a new prosecutor?
Correct.
So I'll be wanting to meet him, so that's why I'm asking, okay? This I was gonna ask with the sharks, but future agenda item, can we finally close the pool parking lot at the same time as the, the main park? I've seen RVs parked in there recently, so I just want to make sure that it's not becoming a popular place for RVs to park and, where Cousin Eddie can find a sewer drain. Does it, does anybody else have interest in that item?
I'm sorry, I was writing at the time, are you meaning like, overnight, like the main park?
Overnight, overnight, yeah, I mean, I'm not, yeah, I'm not worried about, you know, it, the handful of days where there's a sharks meet, and we know about it, people arrive early, okay, nobody freak out, but, you know, when there's an RV parked out there, it's like, okay, you know, you know, Scout and I don't want to go over and knock on an RV, so, but it'd be nice if we didn't have that problem hanging around. Should be, should be the same as the other park.
Do you request for an agenda item?
Yes, and, and I think Joe did as well.
Yes. I'd like to hear about it as far as the requirements on that, or the restrictions on it.
We'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Future agenda.
All right, that's all.
Councilman Summerlin.
Not at this time. Just to remind everyone that the Civic Club is a very active organization that meets the second Tuesday of every month, and the next meeting is next Tuesday at 5:00. Just to remind everyone that the Civic Club is a very active organization that meets the second Tuesday of every month, and the next meeting is next Tuesday at five o'clock. We would certainly hope more people in, throughout Shenandoah would attend and help with planning of the projects and making sure that they're manned properly. Charlie is doing a great job. His job is going to get a little bit more challenging since Susan Kyle is, has, has accepted a position, a really nice position with the Woodlands, doing something similar to what she was doing here, but at an elevated level, at a much higher pay, and a full-time job with full-time benefits. So we're going to lose Susan, unfortunately. She's been doing a great job for us. But the Civic Club relies a lot on, on Susan, and I think that Charlie's going to have to rely a little bit more and lean on all of us, on the council and people in leadership throughout the community. So please, please come to the Civic Club. The other thing, I'd like to commend the police chief for doing the research on what's going on with the law here, with the arrest. I think you're doing an outstanding job. Your, your staff is doing an outstanding job, and I hope that we can keep up with you and, and keep supplying you with the tools and data that you need to keep our neighborhoods safe. But thank you very much. Great, great, great report.
Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Councilman Robinson?
A couple of things. A while back, we adopted the motion and second and voted on the establishment of a Parks Master Plan. And I know the administrator has launched that project, and she gave us a little bit of an update a while back on who was hired and such. But I'd like to find out where we stand right now. We've been into it for about three months, I think, and I understand we've had a survey going on our city website, I believe, and Facebook, and just wondering what kind of responses are we getting? And can you just give us some general update on what's happening?
Sure. I, as soon as we got back from the holidays, I touched base with the project manager, and my question, my primary questions were, you know, what's their response to the survey then like? And how long are they going to, how long do they want to keep it open? And the response has been a little low, but what we're going to do is another push out to social media. We've already done a couple. And I know it's, the holidays may have slowed that down a little bit, but we're going to see if we can get a little bit more response. And then we'll close that survey. Their next step, which we don't have a definitive timeline on, because I want to have a meeting with them and fully understand that next step, but they want to have a public meeting, a public, kind of a workshop, where they have, you know, tables set up in residence, and they, they discuss some of the things from the survey, they discuss some other components that might go into the park plan. And then what'll happen is they'll, they'll work on these little teams, and then they'll rotate people out. So you're, you have different groups communicating throughout this whole process. So that's the next step. But as soon as we, like I said, we're going to do another push on, to get some survey results, but it's been a little low. So hopefully, hopefully we'll get some more feedback.
So probably some, really some higher-profile advertising or something to encourage the response of residents.
It's also.
It's going to be necessary, okay.
How did that get pushed out? Because I, I never got an email like I typically get for a lot of things, or notification. So I was kind of curious how that went out. I just stumbled upon it on the website.
Yeah, it's on, it's on our website, that's true. And Kirby has put it out on social media, but we can put it out through that listserv and perhaps, yeah, get more, more distribution.
You know, the, the next step that you talked about, having a workshop of some sort with our citizens, I think is going to be very critical in the planning process.
And we had, I guess it's been, it's been several years ago, but we had a, a town hall that, gosh, this has been years ago, where we tried to, I think it was, we were trying to get specific feedback on the idea of a dog park. And it was kind of a little bit all over the place, you know? So we, we hope to get a little bit more certainty about what the community would like to see and, and how we can do that, and where we can do that, and then, you know, go from there.
Let's put together a strategy then to, to list the support from the public. First of all, through response via, you know, survey, and then if, if needed, then schedule a, a, I hate to call it a town hall meeting, but a, a specific event to, for this purpose.
And that's what they have in mind, too, is, is, you know, an event for the public to, to weigh in on these ideas.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Like a forum, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. That's a good way to title it. Mayor, the other thing, tonight we had a very interesting conversation about the Sharks and how they contribute to the promoting of our city, and the way it's been approached in the past, and what something happened along the way, and it's gotten a different character and flavor. And I, I think we did the right thing tonight. And I'm wondering if it would be beneficial for you to appoint a committee to work with staff, so that the burden is not totally on Joseph and all that, that has some council perception and, and feel to it in negotiating or discussing. And maybe instead of looking at it as a tenant landlord relationship, we start looking more of it as a partnership. And I was thinking that perhaps I would certainly be willing to participate in that, and maybe Councilman Pollard would because of his, his marketing background is, you know, obvious. So I just wanted to ask you if you might consider that, perhaps include Mike in that process as well?
I think that's an excellent idea.
So it would be at your, at your pleasure, sir, whenever you decide to do that.
We'll do that, yes. We'll definitely establish that.
That's all.
And, and I'm happy to hear that you're willing to.
Certainly, absolutely.
To chair it as well.
That's always the one.
Assuming that you are. And Mike. Yes, I agree. All right, I don't, I don't have anything in particular, but just want to, since this is the first meeting of 2025, I just want to wish everyone a, a very prosperous year. I'm certainly looking forward to, to the next 12 months. We have a lot of good things that we're looking for, that we're seeking to do, complete some old, tie some, some old loose ends and explore some, some future, future ones.
As I left the home tonight to come here, the, the City of Los Angeles was really, really being taxed with this fire, so I'd like to keep everybody in LA in everyone's thoughts. They'd be red, as I've seen on TV.
Absolutely. All right, having said that, it's seven thirty-eight, and we're going to adjourn this council meeting.